Foxborough Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm calling this public meeting of the board, including the public hearing that the board is scheduled to conduct to order. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we are conducting this meeting virtually by Zoom. Public comments this evening will be accepted during the public hearing. To offer comments via Zoom, you'll be asked to use the button in Zoom that is labeled Raise Hand. This will alert us that you wish to speak. We will individually bring you into the meeting. If you're planning to speak tonight, you may want to take a moment to find the Zoom button. Make sure that you are in a quiet space and have a working microphone. Also, please be sure that your Zoom window includes your name. If you are participating by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you will not be speaking tonight, we recommend you request that you not use Zoom, but instead watch this meeting on Foxborough Cable Access by cable television, their YouTube channel, or Facebook Live. In the event of any technical difficulties, matters on our agenda that cannot be considered automatically will be continued to the board's next meeting. That meeting currently is scheduled for February 18, 2021. All votes that we take tonight will be done by roll call. At this time, I wish to recognize the other members of the board. David Brown, Kimberly Mellon, I guess Kurt is not here? No, I don't see Kurt, and Lorraine Brew. Finally, I wish to recognize Diana Gray, the board's administrative assistant, and Barry Ringler, the town of Foxborough's building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer. Tonight is a first for the board in several respects. It's the first time that Mr. Ringler, who was the town's new building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer, has joined us. And we welcome Barry, you know, to our zoning board team. It's also the first time that we have conducted a meeting entirely remotely by Zoom. And to my understanding, this is the first, or this will be the first, public hearing that the town has conducted by Zoom. I know that the Board of, uh, the Planning Board and the Board of Selectment have met by Zoom, but to my knowledge, they have not done so with respect to a public hearing.
Uh, the planning one actually did.
I'm sorry, they did.
Yeah, the solar one.
Oh, okay. Well, regardless, this is the first for us. So I would request the patience of all concerned. It now being 7:00 PM, Stephanie Sylvie seeks a variance pursuant to Section 4.14 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, as well as any other required special permits, findings, and/or variances to allow the existing garage to be converted into a second residential dwelling structure on the property located at 15 Baker Street in the R-15 Residential and Agricultural District. The property is also located within the historic district. Just a couple of housekeeping items. First, there is an error in the hearing notice. It's not Section 4.14, it's 4.1.4. That... I will refer to the section though tonight as 4.14, but again, the correct section is 4.1.4, not 4.1.4. Second, I submitted a disclosure notice to the town clerk earlier today in which I indicated that I have had two telephone conversations with the attorney representing the applicant in this matter, the first of which was a month before it was filed. No statement was made by me during such conversations as to how I might vote in this matter, nor an information that might persuade me to vote in a certain manner. And I indicated that, you know, taking into the, into account the facts that I've disclosed, I feel that I can perform my official duties objectively and fairly. Finally, we're, we're a board of five members, and again, Mr. Yegi and Wright now is not with us. So there are four of us here. All of us are entitled to and will participate in the public hearing itself. However, only three of us, in accordance with state law, are authorized to vote. And typically, the individuals who vote are the regular board members, and that's David Brown, Kim Mellon, and me. If one of us is absent, or if one of us has to recuse him or herself, then one of the associate members is authorized to sit in that person's place and to vote on the matter. So again, the four of us are here, and if Mr. Yegi enjoys, joins us, we'll all be authorized, all are authorized to participate in this matter.
Kurt's coming now.
He's coming now?
Yep.
But only David, Kim, and Lorraine are authorized and will be voting. And that's on all matters relative to the public hearing.
You meant Dave, Kim, and Barney?
I'm sorry, yeah, Dave, Kim, and Barney. As I said, this is the first we've done. Frank, if you're ready, or whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, the applicant is Stephanie Sylvie, who is one of the owners of the property at 15 Baker Street. Uh, 15 Baker Street is located in the R-15 zoning district and is also within the historic district. Uh, the lot is approximately 22,730 square feet, which is roughly half an acre. The lot contains a single-family residential dwelling and a barn. Uh, both the, um, dwelling and the barn were both constructed around 1950s or so, I'm sorry, 1850s. So it's a very historic, uh, building, uh, both of them. The house contains approximately 2,975 square feet of living area amongst three floors, and meets all the zoning requirements with regard to frontage and, uh, front yard, side yard, rear yard requirements. Uh, the barn is two stories and is very unfinished. It does not have a basement. Actually, below, uh, the first floor, um, which you would call a basement, you access from the back, and it's all dirt underneath. It actually collects, uh, a good amount of water, um, because it's the low point, uh, within that area of the lot, not the whole lot. Uh, the barn is approximately 25 feet, uh, by 31 feet, or approximately 775 square feet per floor. Again, uh, they're two stories here. It, uh, it has not been used as a garage per se. Nobody parks cars in there currently. My understanding is the former owner didn't either. Uh, there's a lip actually on the two doors that face the, um, street. So they really don't use it. The barn is a pre-existing non-conforming structure uh, because its side yard is just over 11 feet from, um, the lot line, where 15 feet is required. So again, the side yard is 11.2 feet, uh, where 15 feet is, uh, required. What the applicant wants to do is to convert the barn into a second residential dwelling unit. Uh, they want to use it, um, as a second dwelling unit. Um, under the, um, Chapter 275 zoning of the Code of Foxborough, specifically under Section 3.0, which is the Use Regulations, is Table 3-1, Table of Uses. Underneath that, there's Group G Residential, Single Family Dwellings and Two Family Dwellings. Uh, both of those are permitted by right within the R-15, uh, zone, um, because they're denoted with the symbol Y, which means permitted. Uh, within Section 3, uh, 3.1.1 states that "A use listed in the Table of Use Regulations is permitted as of right in any district under which it is donated by the letter Y, subject to such restrictions as may be specified elsewhere in the bylaws." So again, single-family dwellings are allowed in the R-15 zoning district, but they're subject to restrictions, uh, which are stated elsewhere in the bylaws. With regard to the historic district, which is Chapter 145 in the code, um, under, uh, Section 145 dice, dash, seven, it states that "No building or structure or part thereof within the district shall be constructed or altered in any way that affects the exterior architectural features as visible from a public way unless the Historic District Commission shall first have issued a certification, certificate, um, with respect to such construction or alterations." Therefore, no alterations, uh, can be done to either the residence or the barn, which is visible from the street, without getting their approval. Um, under the existing zoning bylaw, and has been allowed previously, the owners of the house could connect, uh, by, um, putting an addition on the house, could connect the house to the barn. And they can do that, uh, by right. By connecting the two, uh, structures together by some type of addition, it now becomes, um, one structure. And with, with one structure, you could, in the R-15 zoning district, you can have two dwellings within one structure, again, a two-family by right. So, what, again, what they could do is do an addition, connect the two structures, uh, make it one structure, and by right, convert the barn into a second dwelling unit. And this has been done previously, uh, within the town, uh, at different locations. The owners, though, would rather not connect the house and barn. Um, one of the main reasons they're doing it is because of the look, the aesthetics of connecting it, uh, would take away from its historic, uh, perspective. They'd like to keep, uh, the historic context with regard to the house and the barn as is. Uh, they feel that the original characteristics, characteristics and architecture of the two buildings would be lost with any kind of addition that would they put, we put up, and prefer to not have to connect it, and again, leave both structures, as is modifying the inside, but keeping the exterior, um, as is, uh, again, with any changes of approval, uh, required from the commission. Uh, so as the chairman indicated, uh, we're asking for a spare, a variance from Section 4.1.4, which states "Only one dwelling structure shall be located on a lot unless otherwise expressly permitted by these bylaws." And, um, Section 4.0 is the dimensional requirements within zoning. So because of 4.1.4, you can only have one dwelling unit per lot. So therefore, is, uh, variance is required if we want to convert the barn into a second dwelling unit, uh, without connecting, uh, connecting it. Now, um, within your packet, there should have been a letter from the Tom Kraus, Chairman of Foxborough Historic, uh, District Commission, uh, dated December 20th, uh, 2020, from the owners to the property owners, uh, saying that the commission's preference is to keep the house and barn as two distinct structures to preserve the historic, original look of both structures.
So Frank, I'll, I'll read that letter into the record.
Okay.
So, and then Mr. Kraus, I know he's on the, um, on the Zoom, and if he wants to add to that, you know, have an opportunity to do so.
Okay, all right. At this point, um, without getting into the specifics of requirements on those, uh, to get a variance, I, I thought it'd be a good chance at this point, Mr. Chairman, uh, to take questions with regard to what we're proposing.
So the first question that I have is, when, when you filed the application, there were a number of pictures that, that you included.
Yep.
And the very last pictures showed some structure that had been, you know, converted into, you know, habitable space. Is that, is that the barn itself?
Um, no, the last couple of pictures, um, are part of the house looking out towards the barn. So if you look at the plan, and you can see the house, the corner of the house closest to the barn is, in that corner, is the bathroom, which depending on which picture you're looking at, um, you can see one of them, you can see a toilet, the other one, you can see a river. That door is going into a full bathroom, and the, and the, uh, pictures being taken from within the kitchen.
In the kitchen of the house looking out towards the barn?
Yes.
Okay.
So the barn is very, very unfinished. It's, 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 uh, very rough.
Are there horses in the barn?
There were.
Reach up.
So I guess the next, you know, question that I have is, if you can just tell us, you know, what, how is the house going to be converted, what, the barn rather, converted? What, you know, what, what, what portions of it will be converted into, is she proposing to, uh, convert into, uh, habitable space, living space?
Uh, both floors will be converted. Um, uh, there'll be a kitchen, living area, bedroom, uh, full bath, and, um, uh, another area where she wants to do some of her pottery work and things like that. And, uh, Stephanie Sylvia is, uh, with us, and I don't know if she wants to say anything. Steph? Is that pretty much what you want to do with the barn?
Exactly, just a little modest art studio with the kitchen, bathroom, living area. Always been my dream to convert an old barn and, you know, so we found this perfect house and we're just trying to get to something that I want.
So will the, will the art studio be on one floor and the living space on another floor?
No, this art studio will just be a little section of, of the upstairs. Um, just a very small little area that I'll paint in. You know, just something I love to do.
Okay, so let me ask another question then. So will the first floor be still a garage space, or will it be also living?
No, that would be, um, a kitchen and living area. It just makes more sense that way.
And then what, the bedroom would be upstairs?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we end up with one bedroom total?
Oh, yeah. It's just me. I don't need more than one.
Now, as far as the art studio, are you planning on doing commercial activities there, or is this just for your own?
No, it's just a hobby. I have a full-time job, so I just really just love doing it, so.
Dave, any other questions?
Um, I guess I'll just ask, if you connected the two structures, Frank, to make it one, with this, wouldn't the, um, side yard setback become, uh, would have to be considered at 15 for a variance?
No, uh, it's been previously done in town, um, where a, um, pre-existing non-conforming structure was too close to a side yard and was allowed to connect up and then convert the, um, uh, other structure into a, um, similar to this, a second, a, a second dwelling unit within the structure. So now you, uh, it has not been required in the past.
When and where was that at?
The one that I, I know about is on, uh, West Leonard Street.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that created a dimensional issue, though.
The, um, garage at that time, and, um, was 9.2 feet off of the side yard, so it was closer than ours. Um, and Diane, Diana has that, uh, file, and she can confirm that.
I can. Let's see if I can figure out how to share it.
Did that create a need for variance, then?
No, I looked at both files within the, um, I was on the Board of Appeals and, uh, the Building Inspector's Office today, and there were no, uh, variance or special, um, uh, permits or findings required. Again, there was a gap between, um, a garage and the house. Uh, they connected it and, um, converted the garage into a, um, an apartment, a second dwelling unit.
What, what year was that work done?
Um, I guess...
1999 is planned.
The, uh, the plan is 99, I'm not sure when the work was done.
Yeah, all right. But it didn't go to the zoning board for any reason, did it, or did it?
It, it had previously gone to the zoning board for a number of things. The garage was originally converted, uh, for use as a catering business. So it had previously been on the board with regard to that. And then, uh, the catering business ceased and, um...
Yeah. All right, I know, I'm, I know the one we're talking about, yeah.
Okay.
Dave, anything else? Nope. Uh, Kim?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Okay, uh, Kurt?
Uh, no questions, pretty straightforward.
Okay, Lorraine?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Frank?
Um, so, so again, the, the, the main variance we're asking is to have a second dwelling unit, so that we don't have to connect. Um, to, so we don't have to connect it. The reason for that is, again, uh, we'd like to keep both, um, buildings as original as possible. A connect, connecting, connecting the two would take away from that. It's also difficult, uh, to connect the two, too, because the first floor in the house is, uh, five or six steps above grade. You take five steps up to the porch, up to porch, and then you have to walk into the house. And the first floor in the garage is that ground level, uh, floor. Uh, the basement within the house, uh, is old stone, uh, foundation, uh, with, um, um, not too low of a ceiling, but a low ceiling, with a lot of pipes and a lot of, um, wires going through there. So it would be very difficult, uh, to do any connection that would really connect the two buildings together. As an engineering friend of mine says often, um, you can do anything, it just takes a lot of money to sometimes. And this would be very expensive to try to do that. The other thing is that corner of the house, again, has a bathroom right in the corner and the kitchen. So it's not really conducive to really, um, expanding there or connecting there, um, at all. So there's a, uh, a financial issue with regard, uh, but the, the, the real hardship we're looking at, uh, that they feel is that they'd like to keep the look of the barn in the house as two separate structures as is, and they prefer not to connect it for visual purposes. But also, they're running into the issue of the difficulty of, um, connecting the two houses because of the elevation difference, the topography, uh, with regard to the two structures. And feel that giving this variance really wouldn't be any detrimental, uh, to the zoning, uh, because they, they could, uh, connect the two and get a second, um, dwelling unit there.
Now Frank, you really haven't talked about the criteria for the variance. Again, Section 4.1.4, as you quoted before, provides that we can only have one dwelling structure on a lot unless otherwise expressly permitted in the bylaw. So you're, you're looking for a variance from that section. What's the basis of your position?
Uh, well, um, various requirements, um, typically two prongs to it. Um, one of them, the first one is only two circumstances relating, relating to the topography of such structures. Um, now again, I'm summarizing moving out. How, we feel the topography with regard to the two structures, um, is making it, um, very difficult to connect the two buildings. Again, the first floor in the residence is, uh, five or six steps above grade. The, um, the entrance into the barn is at grade. The residence has, um, the bathroom in the exact corner of that house, and then the kitchen is right there. And below it, in the, um, basement, which is all fieldstone, uh, foundation, is all piping, uh, the septic and other wiring. So in order to connect the two houses, uh, two structures, it would be very difficult, um, to do it. Uh, so because of the topography of the structures and the land and affecting this property, and particularly, and not the zoning district, and particularly that, um, we meet that criterion, criteria. Again, the other one is a hardship, financial or otherwise. I think I explained the financial hardship. But also the other financial hardship would be, uh, taking away from the historic perspective of these two structures. Um, again, we want to try to keep it as historical as possible. If you connect the two structures, you're taking away from that. And we strongly feel, oh, that's a, that's quite a hardship. And then the third prong is desired relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without, uh, nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the ordinance of the bylaw. Um, we think we meet that, uh, because, um, it wouldn't really harm anything. As a matter of fact, we think by not connecting it, it would, um, really go to the benefit of the zoning and the historic district.
So one thing I can't quite get my head around is why you would not consider this to be a use variance.
Well, um, a use variance, uh, if I can get my zoning book. If you're looking for what uses are allowed, you have to look under, uh, Section 3 of the zoning bylaws, the Use Regulations. If you look under the Use Regulations under G, Residential, uh, right in there, under six, Single Family Dwellings is allowed by right, as are Two Family Dwellings in the R-15, allowed by right. So they are allowed. However, as you has indicated, under 4.1.4, which is under Section 4, which is Dimensional Requirements, says you only can have one dwelling per lot. In that same section, it talks about side yard and rear yard requirements. Now, if somebody wants a front yard variance, again, let's say they want to get closer than the, um, 25-feet, um, yard front setback. They want to put a farmer's porch on, for example, and they want to go 20 feet from the front yard. That's not called a use variance, because it's under the Dimensional Requirements. So, um, this is a dimensional requirement. One of the dimensional requirements is you only can have one, uh, dwelling per lot, and therefore you can have a, um, a, um, um, you can, you know, obtain a variance by that. But under the use area, single-family dwellings, plural, are allowed.
So you're saying because the table of uses, because it's saying single-family dwellings, meaning plural, are you saying that that's the, the, the otherwise permitted exception?
Plural is there, so it, it, it states more than one. But I think in either case, whether it's single plural, single-family dwelling, we, are allowed on within the R-15 zoning district. And, and if you could only have one dwelling in a zone, why would you need 4.1.4? You wouldn't need that.
Now, can you repeat that, Frank? I sort of lost you on that. I'm sorry.
If, 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 under your interpretation that, under, um, Table 3-1, if you read it as single-family dwellings, if you read that as stating that, oh, under the Use Regulations, you only can have one dwelling per lot, that's how you read that table. Why would you need 4.1.4?
Anyone else have any other questions?
No.
I'm sorry?
Uh, Dave Brown, none, no questions.
Okay, um, Kim, nothing? Okay, um, Kim, nothing? Kurt or Lorraine?
No, no questions right now.
Barry, I, I overlooked you before. Do you have any questions?
No, no questions at this point.
Okay. Um, why don't we do the following? We'll allow for public comments or questions. And I think what I want to do first, I'll read the, um, the letter from Mr. Kraus that was in the, um, application package. So this is a letter that's on Tanna Foxborough Historic District Commission Stationary. The letter is dated December twenty, two thousand twenty to Stephanie Sylvie, William Sharnett, and Mackenzie McDermott, fifteen Baker Street, Foxborough, Mass. zero two zero three five. Dear Stephanie, William, and Mackenzie, welcome to the Baker Street Historic District. Our historic district was established to preserve the architectural significance and rich character of your neighborhood. The buildings and structures need your special care and attention to preserve the uniqueness of Baker Street. I understand that you intend to establish your art studio in your barn and for Stephanie to live there. If you plan to make exterior alterations to your property, you must submit your plans and obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Foxborough, from the Foxborough Historic District Commission. The commission will consider the general design proportions, detailing, mass, arrangement, texture, and building materials used. The commission would prefer that you keep the house and barn as two distinct structures to preserve the historic, original look of both structures. Historic homes often get relief from current building code, for example, hand railing, height and spacing, specifications for steps, et cetera, in order to maintain the historic look. In a similar manner, I hope the town of Foxborough will consider the historic value in maintaining the original look of two distinct structures and allow your living studio to remain structurally independent. Sincerely yours, Tom Kraus, Chairman, Foxborough Historic District Commission. Um, Mr. Kraus, you're, you're with us. Do you have anything you would like to add to that?
You did.
Unmute. You hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. So not, not really. I mean, I just want to make it clear that we haven't approved anything. I mean, there's been no plans that have come before us, or what we're just saying is that we would prefer that it remain as two, two, two separate dwellings. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, I see none. Um, Ms. Sylvie, anything you want to add?
Um, not at the moment. I just, I think Frank did a good job at explaining what our intentions are.
Okay. Is there anyone else? None. Um, do we have any?
We got our, uh, Bonnie, a message just popped up. I guess Trish, uh, that's on the screen. Says she's having a problem unmuting her mic.
And now we can.
Okay.
It was saying the host is not allowing participants to unmute themselves. Um, so I'm Trish Selby, and this is Michael, and we live next to Steph. Hi, Steph. We can, we almost see each other through our windows. Um, and I, I have a couple of questions about the setbacks and about, well, I have a few questions, and I don't actually know who they go to. Um, so I, I did see Tom's letter originally because I also sit on the historic district. Um, and we all agree that, of course, the barn has always been a barn, and it should look like a barn, and what's going on inside of it is not the historic district's business necessarily, as long as it still looks like a barn on the outside. Um, my concern as a neighbor is that the barn happens to block the view from their house into the only private part of our backyard. We are so exposed on Baker Street, both from railroad and from Baker, that we have one tiny little L in our backyard where we can't be seen by anybody else sitting in our backyard except the barn. But the barn doesn't have anyone in it. It's a barn. And if it's converted and windows are added in that entire whatever fifteen hundred square feet or so of barn turns into a house, that house is now directly looking into our backyard, and, and as you have noted, it is very close to our yard.
So you, you, you said you had a questions?
So you, you said there's a fifteen-foot setback, but, and I just see him as Frank, but I assume Frank is their attorney.
Yes.
Okay, so their, their attorney has said that they don't need a variance to convert the barn into a house, even though it doesn't have the setback.
Um, right. Let, let me see if I can phrase this as simply as possible. So the, the town in its zoning bylaw establishes dimensional requirements. And those dimensional requirements, among others, are, are how close a house can be to, to the side yard setback. And in the R fifteen district, it's a fifteen-foot setback. In other words, a house cannot, a house or, or another structure in the property cannot be closer to its side yard than fifteen feet. The house meets all the dimensional requirements, but the barn does not. The barn is only eleven feet. And the barn has been at this location, as was indicated earlier, well before the zoning bylaw took effect, so it's constituted as a pre-existing non-conforming use, meaning it does not conform structurally with the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. But it has vested rights because it, it, it has been in that location prior to the, the existence of the bylaw itself.
Yeah, so it's, it's grandfathered in.
Yeah.
As a barn.
Well.
It's not a living, it's not a dwelling unit. That's like saying a garage is where it is. It doesn't mean it can become an ADU.
Mm-hmm.
It's grandfathered in as a structure.
Yeah.
Just like.
But a structure isn't a dwelling unit.
As long as you can convert it to an allowed use on that lot, you have a right to do that. Now, depending on what you're doing, you could run into other issues. But for example, if you have a commercial building that's pre-existing non-conforming, and you have, um, office space that one, um, attorneys are using, but you, the person leaves, and you want to convert it to a different type of use that's allowed in that district, you can change that by right. But if you do any work to the structure, depending on the work, you then may fall into special permits, variances, and things like that. But changing from one allowed use to another is, you know, um, typically allowed, but again, if you do any work on the structure, it, it, you could run into some issues.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
So many, but they're probably not appropriate at this stage, so.
Well, you know, tonight's the night we'll be making a decision on this, which I think we will, so if you feel you do have any other questions, it would be appropriate to ask them tonight.
Okay, so it's an ADU. Isn't there a, well, it become, I, I, I'm jumping a few steps. I'm going to assume they don't get connected. I'm going to assume the barn is its own structure that is going to be converted in its use to a dwelling unit. So now you have two completely separate single-family homes sitting on that lot. Is the second one now considered an ADU? Or do you have two single-family homes?
No, the, the, um, in, in order to be an accessory dwelling unit, it, it would, it would need to be connected to the main structure. So if, if they were to connect the barn, the garage, to the, to the home itself and, and meet whatever the criteria are for an accessory dwelling unit, you know, that, that, that's a possibility, but, but you would need to connect, you know, barn to house in order to, to be an accessory dwelling unit. What what they're, they are applying for, what Ms. Sylvie is applying for is, is again, not to connect, but to establish a second separate dwelling unit on the property itself. That would not be considered to be an access, an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, so that becomes two single-family homes
Correct.
on one lot.
Correct.
Let's assume it's built, and then let's assume somewhere down the line, Steph and Billy decide to sell the house, well, now the house is. They could split the lot and sell two different homes.
In, in order to split the lot into two separate lots, they would have to go before the zoning board. And there would not be enough, I don't believe, enough property, a, a, enough square footage on the lot
Right.
at current to allow for two separate lots. But they, they can't split on their own. They would have to come to the zoning board to request the variance.
And Mr. Chairman, we'd be more than unamenable to a condition saying that the lot shall never be split. Or I mean, to that effect. We have no problem with that.
How, how do you figure, um, how many cars? We, we'd have to figure this is needed probably parking for four cars.
Eight.
And how do you come up with three? No vis, nobody's going to visit?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant on a regular basis. Um, there's three owners here, so. Um, four? I mean, yeah.
And can you, do you have the width to do that? I'm, I'm looking at this, you know, I know the driveway's not a.
It's actually pretty large, to be honest.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure how it would work.
I don't know the dimensions, but, um.
I don't know, Dave. If you see one of the the photos, you, there are three cars, uh, side by side by side. Could easily get a fourth car, you know, in there by moving the cars around a little bit, and then you could stack them. And it's, it's, um,
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think they'd be a problem. I know of other two families and more that have a lot less parking.
Okay. We, we, we sort of interrupted Ms. Sylvie. I don't, I don't know if you have any other question?
Uh, no. Okay, thank you.
I, I, I want to just make, you know, one thing clear. Um, you know, again, in order to have an accessory dwelling unit, that unit must be part of the main house itself. And, and the way the bylaw currently reads is that a family member of the owner of the property must live in both, you know, house and, and the accessory unit.
Exactly what's going to happen.
Okay. What is being proposed here, though, are two separate unconnected dwelling units. So that's not an acc, that's technically not an accessory dwelling unit. And again, the reason it's not is because it's, among other things, not connected to the main house as, as far as what they're proposing. So in theory, what you could have is somebody who is not a family member residing in one of the two units.
That's not happening, but.
In theory, in theory, and it could happen with a subsequent owner.
Well, in theory, you could, again, connect it, make it a two-family, and rent out both dwellings.
Correct. Correct.
You know, and if we, if we, um, obtain this variance and, and have two dwelling units on the lot, that owner down the road could rent out both.
Correct.
To be honest, yeah. And just back to the parking, under zoning, you need, uh, uh, four parking spaces per unit for multi-family. Um, and one visitor space for every four units. Uh, so you really just need, um, kind of five spots for it. So I think there'd be more than enough area there to get five spots under the, what's required under zoning. If you've just looked at the zoning requirements.
I understand.
Anybody else have any other questions? Ready for motion to close the public portion?
I move that we close the public portion of this hearing. And that's Dave Brown making the motion.
Yep.
Second?
Second it?
Barney, um, Zoom calls are required. All votes are roll call votes.
Yep, yep, yep. I know that. They did that in my introduction.
Kim's on, Kim's on mute.
Hang on for a second.
I second.
Okay, good. So a yes vote would be to close the public portion of the hearing, and no vote would not to close the public portion, and I have to do it by roll call. So Dave Brown?
Yes.
Kim Ellen?
Yes.
And Barney over it, yes. Anybody want to start?
Yeah, could I start?
Go ahead.
So what are the thoughts about, uh, common ownership to keep it within one? I think if, if they have it as two separate dwellings, then you have two separate owners that it could be, which I guess, well, to, uh, convert it to condos, let's say, if it was housed in one building. So you could do that. If it was in one building, you could convert it to condos, one owns the first floor, one owns the second floor, that kind of thing for a two-family, but these are separated from each other on the same lot. And I'm with you with the idea that, uh, we're really granting a use variance. I'm not too sure we can do that, but, um, but if we do, uh, you know, I, I, nobody knows what the future brings, but this would enable them to be able to sell that other barn, uh, to anybody, you know, so I don't know what the implications would be down the line if that were to happen. If we did put conditional that, uh, this would expire, you know, upon, uh, you know, the sale, let's say, so it's not in the same ownership, common ownership of the family, then it goes back to a barn or not recognized as a, a separate dwelling unit.
Mm-hmm.
A dwelling. Not all, but it's just food for thought as to which way to, to go with it, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I just feel that, uh, you know, a developer to command and propose to put two buildings on one lot would be a no answer. The answer would be no. And then how we get around that, what would that developer want to do? What would, you know? He would be told, or she, uh, we can't put two buildings on the one lot. I understand, uh, semantics with the word dwellings versus dwelling. I think the intent there is a single dwelling, uh, no different than multiples and, you know, dwellings and how many we can have of those, and so I, I really think that section is geared towards, this is for a single family and then also two-family. Instead of, you know, most people would refer to it as families.
Mm-hmm.
Not really intentionally getting into plural. I think it's really about one family, single family, you know, and
Yep.
you know, on, on that end of things, so, um, you know, that, and, uh, again, maybe it's not provided in the bylaw, maybe it's something to go warrant article of the future, maybe something to add in there as, uh, you know, Bonnie, you and I have talked about what I had in Brookline, what we had conversions that you could do it, it enabled you, and, and it's written in there, that you, as long as all the front yard, side yard, and everything met, whether it was the existing building or whatever you were converting, if it met it, you were okay. If it didn't meet it, well, then of course you'd have to go to the board, but it was for a special permit, not the variance. You know, uh, so I, I don't see the provision here that allows special permit. That's why we're talking about variance, and, and I don't agree with the, uh, topography, uh, issue, I, but that's another.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I, I think that, um, it's this precedence that we're setting. We're getting a wave of people that are coming in from Boston because of the coronavirus, uh, and we're going to start to get more and more of these, these kinds of, uh, uh, people that want to move into our town and create more density, which is essentially what you're doing here. Uh, these people, from what I understand, that live there, uh, are not, uh, people that have been there, you know. For many, many years, they're relatively new owners of the building. So what's to say that? We buy this lot, they do it, we set the precedence and they buy another lot, they do it again and again. You know, who who knows if that's what uh they have a business of? They could be, maybe not, but it it uh could we deny it? No, because. This is America. Buy another lot, do it again, you know, right?
Okay, so. Let let me um. Unless somebody else wants to go next, let me go. Um, you know, the fact that we say single family dwellings, um. I I think it's just a product of who whoever wrote. Those particular words in the table of use.
I agree.
You know, the same use group, we have accessory apartment singular.
Right.
Um, assisted living facility singular. Multiple multifamily dwellings, plural, two family dwelling. Singular. So I don't think that is dispositive of 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 any any of the issues. And I think as the the board well knows. We've taken great care whenever we've had. Permit requests for oversized garages. To ensure that they're not going to be used for residential purposes.
Correct.
And, you know, again, that in part is because of section, you know, four one four. Um, but I think it's also a recognition on our part that we want to make certain that. There's no potential use. For those structures for residential purposes. And as a consequence, we've added a number of conditions when we've approved any kind of permit of that nature. Um prohibiting it. I I. Going back to. Section four one four itself. And the specific words, you know, unless otherwise, you know, permitted. And what I want to point out is that, if I can find it.
That's what I'm saying. I don't find in the other area that.
Hold on, hold on. Section nine, six, seven, one of the bylaw. It specifically provides. That more than one dwelling structure may be located on a lot within the CPOD. That has to do with the Chestnut Pace and Overlay overlay district. And I think that's the kind of. Exception. To the restriction in four point one point four that the planning board in the town meeting is looking for. And not that a word is used. You know, poorly. In the um, in the table of uses. Dave, you want to go next?
Uh. I'm trying to catch up with that paragraph you just cited.
Yeah, uh, nine point six point seven point one. It's under the Chestnut Pace and Overlay District.
Oh, okay, yeah, so you're that. But that area, that section was written for that. Create that district.
Right, but again, I I think that's the specific wording. That it, you know, would 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 be the the exception to the one dwelling. You know, per per uh lot requirement.
I agree.
Specific wording that the bylaw is looking for.
It's allowed that one specific part of town.
Right, yeah, it was written for that.
Right, not allowed in.
Yeah.
Lots, it's allowed in that one part of town. No different than an overlay district would be, you know, unique to other parts of town. That are not.
Well, I, you know, I tend to agree that, you know, uh, with Bonnie and uh. And I guess you Barry as well. Uh. That this is a, you know, a use kind of a variance. And I understand what Frank's saying, but I. You know, with the word in and the plural and the singular and all that.
He can try.
Can try. It's a garage. It's said, well. I guess it wasn't built to be a garage back in the eighteen fifties, but. It's the closest thing to uh what it is or was, you know?
Sure.
It was a carriage house, I guess, probably. It's a garage. So I would uh. Yeah, I agree. With Bonnie, you?
Uh, Kim?
So I I do have just a couple of things. The first, I really do want the applicants to understand, we're not just thinking about this for you. As has been said, we're really thinking about this as setting a precedent. For the whole town. So every time we do something like this, it doesn't matter what it is. One of the first things that's on our mind is. Uh, what does this do for us if we're if we're setting a precedent? Um, so. The thing I keep coming back to is for. Point one point four, only one residence per lot. Then I go to ten point two, point two, three. And I'm wondering if we're approving this. Are we nullifying the town's intention in the bylaws? For one residence per lot? Now, if this is something that the town is interested in revisiting, if this is something. You know, was it the town could really decide this could be a great way for all all these different reasons that we would want to do something, then. To have town meeting vote on this. Is one thing. Was we approach very clearly, for me anyway. Getting away from one residence per lot on four point one point four. It feels like something that three people in a town. Shouldn't decide if that this sort of a thing should be. More of an entire town meeting decision. Um, so that's. If the town meeting said yes, then that's a whole different ballack.
Mm hmm.
And I agree with that, you know, we've had cases before where. You know, the solution has been that the applicants or. Some group. Will change the bylaw and that's fine. We're here to interpret the bylaw and if they change the bylaw. So that we would interpret it differently, then so be it, not a problem.
Correct.
Yep, Kim, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Kurt. Let me go to Kurt first.
Sure.
Um, well, I I think Kim did a really good job articulating the same.
As she always does, as she always does.
Right, exactly. And then. So I I I mean, I mean, really aligned with what she had just said a a moment ago. I also. Uh, wanted to uh think, I I wa- I wanted to say that I don't think the grade change between the garage and the house is something that would be um. Something that you couldn't overcome. I mean, I I just, it it's, I've seen a lot worse conditions where. You were trying to made up two historic structures together and it happens pretty routinely. So uh, I don't see that as a hardship.
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Lorraine?
Well, I I agree with um, I think Kim's explanation also. When I was looking at four point one point four, you know, that would have been my question. Am I missing? It being stated expressly stated somewhere else in the in the bylaws that this is, this can be permitted and. I'm not hearing of that.
Yeah, the the only place, you know, I looked and the only place I could find was the um. You know, again, the Chestnut Pace and Overlay District, um, you know, wording. I mean, there may be others, but I couldn't find anything.
Yeah, okay.
That might be what Frank was referring to when he said there are others.
I don't know.
Yeah, could be.
So. Unless there's something else, I guess a motion would be in order.
So uh, Dave Brown, I would move that we not grant the requested variance.
Kim, second?
Second.
So a yes vote would be to. Not grant the variance. And I got to do a roll call again. Um, Dave Brown?
Yes.
Kim Ellen?
Yes.
And Barney over it, yes. So Frank, you know that there's a right to appeal. Um. And obviously you have the right to, you know, to connect the two two structures. And, you know, we can obviously talk about that if that becomes. You know, something to to do, as you you've indicated. And I don't think anybody disagrees. Um. Two family structures are allowed by right in the uh, in the R fifteen di- district.
Yes, yeah, that's correct. So um, I haven't talked to my clients yet, uh, but I don't think an appeal is in the works. I think. Uh, the connection will probably be done.
Mm hmm.
They do want two family there. Again, the 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 real gist of it is. Um. We want to do something. To keep the look of the historic district.
Yeah.
You know, um. And. Since this is a negative um response. Uh, they'll go forward with doing the connection. And I think the historic commission will now understand that they've done all they can.
Mm hmm.
Try to keep it separate. And uh, just move on from there. And as we've indicated previously, the town has allowed. In similar circumstances with uh, garages closer to side yard. For the connection to be had and the conversion to occur to a two family. Uh, without any findings or permits.
Mm hmm.
Uh, but, you know, we can all work together with regards to that.
Yeah, I think I think on on that, you know, I've given that some thought, you know, having done any, you know, research on that, and it's certainly. You know, when it, when the time comes, you know, you and and Barry and I can discuss that, just to, you know, to be clear on that. You know, let 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 me say as well. Um, and and I'm partly responding to 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 Frank and and to, you know, Ms. Sylvie and also to Tom Kraus. Um. You know, I I was a history major in college and and I started going, working on a doctoral degree in history, so I have an abiding sense and and a love for. You know, for for history itself, and that includes. Historical architecture. And I realize that it's it's important to to maintain. As much as we can, you know, as far as um. As as far as homes that are that are historical in this community. Um, un- unfortunately. Or maybe it's fortunate, but you know, the the zoning board is required to review the the zoning bylaw. And make a decision on on the basis of the zoning bylaw. So I don't want you to take it that we're rejecting. Any historical notions and any notions of aesthetics. It's just that our decision was based on what the zoning bylaw does it, does not allow. And we made what we feel is the most appropriate decision. Under the circumstances. So there's nothing negative towards the historical commission, nothing negative in our decision towards. Any any concept of maintaining historical, you know, notions in town and historical a- aesthetics. It's just a decision that was made on the basis of the zoning bylaw.
And I agree with that, what Bonnie said.
So that being it, um, I think we're done as far as the public hearing. Frank, don't go away because we need you for another matter.
Okay.
So I think the next. Item on the agenda is the. Minutes from our last meeting, which Diana sent out a couple of days ago. Anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
Oh.
So again, we're going to do, go through the roll call and a motion and a vote.
I move we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, and actually on this one, all five of us can vote. So, but again, I got to do my roll call. Dave Brown?
Yes.
Kim Ellen?
Yes.
Kurt Yegian?
Yes.
And Lorraine Brew?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the next item is a letter. That I think, that I know that Diana had sent to to the board. From uh media partners. Um, as you may recall, we approved. Earlier this year, the, or earlier in two thousand twenty, I should say. A static billboard for an entity called Metro Vision LLC. And the letter that we received earlier this month indicates that they've. Consolidated consolidated their. Projects. Into another entity called Media Partners MRV LLC. Um, I spoke with Frank a little bit about this. Frank, I asked you to fi- see what you can find out about the. Status of the two companies. I know that. The Secretary of State's records still list them as separate business entities. But what else we able to find?
Uh, to be honest with you, Barney, I wasn't able to connect with him. We played a little phone tag.
Okay.
Um, but my understanding is is he transferred um, everything from uh Metro into the new. Entity. And he had um, some other. Similar entities that he transferred into that new entity. Now, the fact that the Secretary of State still lists it as an ongoing entity doesn't mean that it has anything in it. No, his indication to me was, this, you know, um. That entity doesn't exist, closes or whatever. Um, which as you know, sometimes the owners don't realize what they have to do to close.
Yeah.
Entities. Sometimes people don't even close it and the state just does it automatically after a number of years and on filings. So he's um. Uh, transferred um. This billboard and um, other assets from other entities into that new. Um. Entity and his partners from, I'm assuming the other entities. Are now. Partners in this new. Um. Corporation. So that's why there are uh different um. Managers also listed from the other one.
Yeah.
Um, and the reason we're requesting it is that in the decision, it says whenever there's a transfer. Of the ownership of the um. Uh, of the billboard, or in this case, just assigns the the rights to it. That um, the board has to be notified. And approve it. My understanding always was is that was done for the purposes of the bond.
Mm hmm.
That in the event in twenty years, it's transferred or sold to somebody else. You want to take a uh, little look at the bond to see if it's enough to. Take it down if that ever occurs. And if at that time you ask for more of a bond. Uh, but it's more a procedural thing just to check to make sure that your 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 bond value is there. Now, they hadn't even put up their bond yet because they haven't filed for the building permit. They're still in the process of filing with the state.
Mm hmm.
And uh, as Barry knows, uh, we've had three different building commissioners sign the application with the state. Uh, because of the um. Uh, pandemic and the executive order uh, by the governor, the um. Billboard authority for the state uh, has not gotten to uh their applications. Uh, the first one, uh, Bill signed. They never even looked at. The second one, Mark signed. Um, I don't know how far along they got. But uh, the signature from the town is only good for, it's either sixty or ninety days, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Ninety days, yeah.
Is it ninety days? And then you're required to get the signature again from uh, the town uh, for whatever reason.
So so Barry, no building permit?
Um, no, no, yeah.
So so I guess the 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 question that that we have to decide is.
I'm sorry, Bonnie. Are you, are you asking me, was there a building permit issued for that?
For for Metro Vision?
Yeah, I found that Mark Dupell had issued a permit and did not, we did not uh gather the bond.
The 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 permit was issued for it without the state approval yet?
Um.
I don't I don't think. I don't think a building permit has been issued. That was my understanding because they don't even have the approval from the state yet. And that's why we had to get. Mark signed the application.
There's a permit in the system, Mark Dupell, uh, which Bonnie, I think you and I discussed, I was talking to you about how. It was to swap out to LED. We're talking about the same one.
That 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 was Lamar.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. You're right. My mistake.
That that's that's another issue we gotta.
It's a different one, sorry. Yep, yep. You're right. That's right, yeah.
So so there's, there's been nothing done.
No.
Statewide or or as far as your office relative to uh, to Metro Vision? Okay.
That's correct.
Um. So I I guess the ultimate decision that we have to make is whether. In in order to to allow for media partners to now be the entity. That's of record, so to speak. Do we need to have a um. Another hearing to modify that or just something in writing to to authorize it? I I think it would be sufficient just to have something in writing to authorize it. Um, there's something in writing and I'll figure out what to do, but it's something I think that. That Dave, Kim and I would need to um, would need to sign. But there's also an error I noticed in the um. In in the in the decision itself, um, condition number eight says advertising on the proposed electric sign. Of adult entertainment facilities and businesses is prohibited. That should be. Advertising on the proposed billboard. So I probably want to correct that.
We'll take the original, Barney.
You'll take the original?
Yeah.
It says electronic.
Yeah.
Proposed electronic sign, not electric.
That that that's when I, when I moved it over from one. That's when I, when I moved it over from one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, who made that error?
I wonder, that, that was, that's my computer. It's, you know, when I hit cut, to do what it's supposed to do.
The same computer I have, yeah.
Yeah.
I probably want to correct, I probably want to correct that, but I think it'll be sufficient, you know, if the board agrees, we don't have to take a vote on it. But if the consensus is just a, something in writing.
That's a clerical mistake, yeah.
To authorize that and to require that, you know, again, all the conditions, other of the conditions will apply to the new entity. And that, and that would include, obviously, you know, the, the bond itself, when, when they get to that point.
Sounds good.
Okay. So why didn't I do that? I'll, I'll come up with something. Frank, you can let them know that's what we're going to do. And I'll put something in writing that, you know, as I said, the, I think Dave, Kim and I were the ones who signed the initial decision, that the three of us will sign as well.
That's fine, because the reason for is, once you file the building permit, it's going to be under the new entity. They're gonna want it to agree up with something.
Yeah. So just to bring the board in, into some of the communication that I've had with Barry and Diana recently. I, I had, after receiving the letter, I had asked Diana to see if the bond was on, on file with the treasurer's office. And I think the, the answer that Diana got back was they didn't know what she was talking about. So I prepared a list of all the decisions that, that we've issued, where we have required a bond, and sent that off to Barry, you know, to look into. And as Barry just indicated, the Lamar advertising one, where we allowed the existing static billboard to be converted to, or at least one side to be converted to electronic, there, there's no bond that's on, there is a building permit, but there's no bond. And the question I have is, are we missing something on some of the other ones as well?
I gotta feel we are, because I don't discuss some bonds on any of these billboards and whatnot on Route 1.
Yep.
But I just, new territory, I'm thinking.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's a, it's a requirement of the signed by law. And in accordance with that, it's wording that we've issued, that we've, you know, added, you know, to each one of those decisions.
So you would figure they're just doing it if they've read the bylaw?
Um, no.
That would be frank on many of them, wouldn't it?
No, no, no. But there's gotta be, the problem is, there's gotta be a mechanism whereby they're not gonna get, you know, if this was a house, you wouldn't get the occupancy without putting it up. There's gotta be some mechanism for someone to ring a bell going, oh, we can't give you that until you give us the bond.
It should be the decision, it should be one of your conditions that's been.
It is, in, in each of the, I think there were eight, eight that I listed. In, in each one of those, it's listed as a condition. And so again, it's in the signed by law, and it's listed as a condition in each one of those cases. I would think, I would think you would require the bond when you issue a building permit.
Yeah, it should say, traditionally, Brookline would say that prior to issuance of the permit, these would be the things that you'd have to have, you know, demonstration to show evidence that, that has been recorded, the registry of deeds is the first thing. And the second thing would be, in this case, evidence showing of the bond, and you need the bond. Prior to issuing the permit, so that should be one of your conditions, just added in there.
Like a checklist.
Yeah.
Right. You have it, yep, you have, you could put it as the first one or whatever, you know, because that would.
Barry, it is listed as a condition.
I understand, is it, is it listed as a condition saying prior to issuance of a permit? No.
No, it's not listed as, as a condition of, of prior issuance of the permit. It's just listed as a condition, I'll just read you the wording.
I'm saying to Anna that way.
This is again, on the Metrovision decision.
Yep.
Metrovision, in accordance with signed by law, section 213, 3E11, shall establish a bond or other financial surety with the town of Foxborough treasurer in the amount of $20,000 toward payment of the cost of future removal of the proposed billboard in the event of its abandonment.
Right.
Now, when, when I, I spoke with Bill Casparra, and he said that what he had done in the past, and I hope he, he actually had done this, was requiring the bond to be submitted at the time that he issued the building permit.
It should be, and, and like I say, in Brookline, what I'm familiar with is in that condition, for the decision on the Board of Appeals, in the condition, it would specifically say, prior to the issuance of a building permit, you have got to have this bond. No different than, right? And plus, you have to show that this has been recorded, the registry of deeds.
Yeah, we don't require, we don't require any sign decisions to be recorded with the registry.
Oh, after, I thought, did they not have to go through ZVA?
No, well, it goes to the ZVA. The ZVA has authority on, on the matters that you don't have authority on, but, but there's no, it's not part of the zoning bylaw. So there's no requirement for registry recording on signs.
Okay, all right. Well, again, then I would just put it in there as one of your conditions, that your condition is prior to the issuance of a permit. And that condition, those that, that your list of, of, from your decision should be brought, or rather uploaded, because nowadays, we're allowing building permits, it shouldn't be as prerequisite to, you know, the billboards.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I, I think we're, we're tapped out as far as total billboards. There, there may be conversions in the future, such as in the Lamar one, and, and that's a, a good point. I'll just try to remember the next time we, we have that kind of situation is to, is to add that wording, you know, at, at the time of, of issuance of a building permit.
Yeah, one way to gain control.
Yep. So again, I, I'll, I'll just come up with something in writing, we'll sign it. Frank, you know, I will send it to you into McClary and, and hopefully, hopefully they'll be able to get before the OAB at some point.
That'll be fine, you know, just so that Barry sees that change, so when they file for the application, the permit, you know, there's no issues. And I'll make sure they come in with a check.
Yeah, well, they can upload it, all part of the permit process, they're all online.
There you go.
Trying to keep Corona out of the town hall. A-hole.
All right, what do we got next? The annual report submission that I sent out to everybody, does anybody have any questions, comments, changes?
Look good.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Frank, thank you.
Thanks.
See you, Frank. So, you know, you, you always come up with a way to keep it as long as the prior year. What are you gonna do every year where we have no applicants?
It, it, it's actually longer than, than in prior years, and that, that's because of the rotation of building commissioners. Thank you. It's about, it's about a parry if longer. I, I made every effort to. One other thing that I have, I, I got an email a couple of weeks ago from, actually, I got two emails from Jeff Lovely relative to the Pots at Heights Avenue case that we had. That, that's the one where they wanted to demolish the existing structure and create a new one or construct a new one. And they had some neighborhood opposition. The first email, which was back in, I think, November or December, he just expressed appreciation, you know, for, for our efforts on behalf of his client. The second email I got, which was about a week ago, we, I'm sorry, about two weeks ago, he indicated that they had been working on the floor plan. I guess nothing has been presented to Barry as of yet, but they've been working on the floor, floor plan. They're going to re-center the garage, is going to be an entrance to the house through the garage. And also, there's going to be an entrance to the house on the easterly side of the property. He also indicated that because of, you know, some of the changes they were making, or some of the, you know, finalization they were working through as far as the floor plan, the total square footage of the property would be about less than 50 feet, I think it was like 49 feet, 49 square feet greater than, than what we get approved and what we get established in one of the conditions. So I don't think there's anything we can do, when I indicated to Jeff, there's really nothing we can do relative to the, or need to do relative to the garage and the entrances, because there was nothing that we imposed relative to that. But as far as the increase in habitable square area, because we had imposed a condition, he would have to come back to us for a modification. Now, what he thought they would do would be to, again, rework the floor plan to, to reduce it to the, to what we had approved. But we'll, we'll see what happens, we, we may see them again. Uh, any other business?
Anything on the agenda for next month so far?
I have, I spoke to one guy about a garage in a front yard setback, I believe. So he's working on that.
Not a big garage, just a setback, huh?
No, just a garage addition, they said. It's attached.
Okay.
Kurt, any more Coney Island pictures?
No, we haven't gone out there yet, but as soon as we do, I'll bring back some pictures and some hot dogs and buns for everybody.
I'm not gonna forget that.
Yeah, we could meet on the common and consume them, right?
Great idea.
All that.
Maybe we should go down to Coney Island with them.
Yeah, okay, come on down.
So what, are you replacing all the signs there or?
Yeah, well, the signs are falling off, they're gonna replace themselves pretty soon. So they're, they're, so they have to figure out a way to adhere these signs to the building and keep it looking basically exactly how it does right now. That's what they're going through.
So I have one question before we go, and you're gonna probably get a kick out of this. I'd like to know how I commute myself and get my little red mic to show up.
So if you go to.
Kim must is an expert at it.
So if you go to participants?
Oh, God, so I gotta hit this.
On the top?
Yeah.
Do you see yourself, we see where it says David's iPad, can you, if you press on, on the mic?
Oh. Did it happen?
No, hold on for a second, I can do it. Maybe?
No.
Yeah, there he is.
Be able to mute his, on the lower left, maybe?
Well, he's muted now. Now he can't unmute. Oh, now he's back.
I'm all set for the next time we do this. Which could be next month, huh?
Yeah, I was tell, telling Dave today that, I think, was it yesterday, Diana, we, we did the walkthrough?
Yep.
So Diana was able to arrange with Mike Weber to have Frank and, and I on to figure out how to do this. And, you know, I, I didn't see anybody with raised hands on my, my screen.
No.
That as an option, I thought it was just the chat is where you could ask a question. I don't, I don't see a raised.
It's under, if you look on the bottom, Lorraine, there's a thing called reactions.
Yeah, oh, there.
If you click on that, the raised hand is in there.
Oh.
But most people click on the chat, and it pops up.
Yeah.
A little easier.
So I'm seeing, on my reactions, I'm seeing applause.
Kurt's looking at thing.
Yeah.
I look at mine, I think I can see the collection of the overhead lights in my background here on the hutch. Is that what it looks like? You see the light?
Yep.
So I need to, you know, we gotta work on this, you know? Give my lights a little next time, and we'll be good.
So, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I, I decided that I, I wanted to do this by Zoom, or my, my wife told me I gotta do this by Zoom. And, and I, you know, mentioned it to, to Dave, and, and at that point in time, Dave said, well, he had no problem with being, you know, being in, you know, in town hall. And I said, okay, if, if I have problems with, you know, with my iPad and, and dealing with it, you know, perhaps Dave could actually chair the, chair the meeting. Then the next day, I get an email from Dave, and he said, you know, I thought about it, and I want to do it on, on Zoom as well. And that's when I contacted, I think, Lorraine, I ran into you one day when I was walking. So then I contacted Lorraine and Kim and, and Kurt. Two days later, I got an email, and Lorraine, you would have gotten, I think, the same email from Mike Johns, and Barry got the email saying that they've decided to have all meetings until, you know, further notice, completely by, by Zoom. So I guess the first one was last week with the planning board, and the selectmen did it a couple of nights ago, and where the, you know, where the third, so at least for the next several months, I guess, until everybody is successfully vaccinated, this is how we're gonna do it. And Lorraine's already been vaccinated.
Yeah, I get my second shot a week from Friday.
Great.
Hey, for you. And I'm waiting, I'm hoping to get it in early February because of my health. I've been told I would be somewhat in that first wave of people. Bring it on, you know? You know what happened to us, we, I just share, we, we had a friend over who we felt very comfortable with, we, she brought over, we'd take out lunches and all that. And then a week later, she's got COVID.
Oh, my God.
So both Camilla and I had to go get tested, and we did fine, but it was like, oh, man, you know, I don't, I just, I'm almost at the finish line, you know, for getting vaccinated, let's get me there. So.
And now?
So anyhow.
So I think tonight went okay, we'll hopefully get a little bit better.
It went great, Barney, really did.
Really good. Yeah, good job.
I know how it'd be with a big audience, but, you know, we normally don't draw big audiences either, so.
Yeah, you know, I, I have to think that, that the Pots at Heights one, where we had, you know, several people standing up and.
Oh, yeah, that probably.
That would have been difficult. Yeah, that would have been difficult.
Yeah.
You know, hopefully, before we get a comprehensive permit, we'll be able to get back into town hall.
Oh, hey, we're right at 10%, man, it seems like we're closed for business, aren't we?
No, not necessarily.
Yeah.
Anyhow, anybody have anything else?
I'm good.
Might as well allow Diana and Mike to go home when we do a motion to adjourn, and I gotta do again a roll call vote. And you've gotta, you've gotta indicate the roll calls in the minutes, I think, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I move that we close the meeting, the zoning board.
I second the motion.
Okay, Dave Brown?
Uh, yes.
Kim Ellen?
Yes.
Kurt Yegian?
Yes.
And Lorraine Brew?
Yes.
Okay, good seeing everybody. See you all in person, take care.
Bye.